I order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Open session, February 8th. I'm sorry. Today is not February 8th. Today is February 22nd, 2016. It has been busy. Okay. It is? Is it? There's been no drinking as of yet, so...
We're celebrating.
I wish.
Supposed to call us that in advance.
We will begin with the pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll begin with the approval of minutes from February 8th, 2016.
Madam Chair, move the Board of Selectmen to approve the open session on February 8th, 2016, as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving along to communications and announcements. Our job postings and vacancy log. Anything new?
Items that were there in the past. You may have noticed in a couple of cases that the one or two words were cut off. They typically were not meaningful terms, but I think in one of the positions, the Health Director indicated the two different places that we were posting the advertisement, and one of those was left off just the nature of scanning the document. But both the Building Inspector and Health Director, the positions have been posted. We're getting resumes back, and we're proceeding down that road to appointment. We're some time off, quite frankly, until we get through the process. Other than that, I think everything else is listed in the log. With the exception of the position currently held by Rich Betcher, we haven't made a final decision on the process by which we're going to fill that role.
Okay. The Lake Kachikowicz status report.
I can open it up, I think if you have to. You got it?
Oh.
Ray, we're bringing you.
Ray, you're getting it home. One of the best trips I ever took.
The lake got a little smaller.
Built up more, though.
Yeah, built up more.
Here we go. Yep, here we go.
I can do it.
I got it?
Got it?
Yeah.
It'll be a code.
It's stinking.
It was up there earlier.
I thought you were going to say he's your technical.
Nope.
Time for more to help you.
Does it make ten?
It is.
It was working before, guys.
We'll get there.
Chris always tells me, reboot.
I'm going to work on it inside.
Okay.
Do the computers where else I know.
It's all my idea.
You're all these fans of technology. One would stay.
It's on the microscope. It's behind us all. Do you want to start? It'll catch up. What you need is the guy here.
Well, yeah, let me get started. We can talk through it, I guess, if you have any handouts. About a little over a year ago, I think, Peter came to me, and Peter Boynton, by the way, is a harbor master, for anybody who knows what Peter is. And he had some good ideas about how to protect the lake, protect the shoreline, and felt that if we got together and did some of these things, that started looking at it, we could get a lot done. And so we put together a small committee with planning and conservation, and Jean Enright and Jennifer Hughes are here, water treatment plant people, DPW, and then over the past year, we've been meeting. And, you know, it's always difficult to kind of balance protection of the water supply with the recreation uses of this great town resource. We believe some of the items we propose here tonight will improve both of these in the long term. Now, one thing I just want to make sure we understand, the drinking water is fine. The lake has a healthy ecosystem, and I had a picture of the fact that there are fish, wildlife, there's loons and eagles and everything else on that lake. And the other thing that you have to understand is in between that lake and your tap is a very efficient water treatment plant. So what this is all about is making some adjustments now so that we can, this all continues well into the future. So, we're at the ... See if I can get this up. Oh, hold on, we could be there. There we are. We're back to Venice.
That's what I was thinking. I'm like, is that the ... It's not as good as Kachikowicz.
School, the governor, they paid it bills.
Well, I got it up on this screen. Well, yeah, no, Peter's going to go through it. I guess you might as well just, you're going to have to look on, I guess, from your handout, so.
I'll describe the photos verbally, I guess.
Peter Boynton, 320 Stevens Street, and thanks for your time, and I appreciate the time that Bruce and Jennifer and Jean have spent over the last year meeting. So the presentation covers four areas on the status of the lake: debris and trash, docks and boats, shoreline clearcutting and erosion, and condition of the lake water, and some potential actions that we could consider taking. So, you know, we asked the question from the beginning, why does it matter? And certainly erosion could affect water quality, so controlling erosion is important, and maintaining the good quality of the lake water over time keeps costs down for water treatment. Protection is cheaper than fixing pollution. And of course, the lake contributes to the appeal of the town. It's a fantastic resource. I'm a native of the town. I grew up here. I grew up across the street from here, actually, and spent a lot of time on the lake, and it's absolutely a fantastic resource, as you all know. So this is the tricky part, where I get to describe the photos verbally, but over the last year, we have found debris in the lake, and some of it's been a little bit discouraging. A surprising number of discarded tires, truck tires, auto tires, wheel rims, wiring, steel drum, furniture, 332 golf balls that I've personally picked up. Unfortunately, there's a couple hundred more left, but that's my limit, 332. And you've heard the old saying, what about the kitchen sink? We found that, too.
Wow.
In terms of trash in the water, so that's, I kind of divide it between debris and trash. And I have to say, I've been away for about 30 years, and when I came back, I was a little surprised to see what was out there. In terms of trash along the shoreline, the sections that were pretty bad were along Route 133, Great Pond Road, between Butcher Boy and Ray's Pond. Pleasant Street, where all the boats are stored, were particularly bad. Now, the good news is, this fall, we had a really terrific volunteer effort, including Merrimack College, 100 volunteers, and all those shoreline areas have been picked up. Also found eight derelict docks that were drifting from side to side on the lake. Some of these are 20 feet long. One was sunk. So far, the score stands at Town and North Andover, seven docks removed, derelict docks, one left. So we're going to get that last one out, too.
Yep, should be out this week.
Also found 11 docks currently in use. These are active docks on the lake, working with conservation and planning. Our understanding is Chapter 91 requires structures below high water. Chapter 91 authorization and Conservation Commission permitting. I think it's an outstanding question whether or not any of those 11 docks are permitted. The concentration of new docks are along Bonnie, on that end of the lake. In terms of controlling erosion, if you were to paddle around the lake and just count the number of boats, you'd find about 180 boats on the shoreline. About one-third of those do not have permits. The concentration of boats are along Pleasant Street. There's between 60 and 70 boats there. Again, one-third of those without permits. 31 boats at the North Pump Station, and about 10 boats along Route 133. And really, two issues associated with those high concentration of boats. One is a lot of erosion associated with it. These boats are left on the ground. When they're left on the ground, the vegetation dies. When the vegetation dies, it's susceptible to erosion. And also heavy trashing in all three of those areas. Trash on the shoreline, trash in the water as well.
Without permits, can you just take them?
Well, that's basically what the recommendation is coming out of this, yes. You know, I would also comment that it, I think those shoreline areas are really not being used for boat use. They're being used for boat storage. A lot of places that have recreational use of boats, what happens is the boats are brought to the shoreline during the boating season, they're used. Obviously, it's easier to use a boat if it's there. At the end of the boating season, they're removed. That accomplishes a couple things: gives the shoreline a chance to recover, to prevent erosion, and also sorts out which boats are being used versus which boats are just being left there for storage. Instead of storing it at my house, I'm storing it on the shore of the lake.
I know they've been there for a long time, but why would we even allow them to be stored during the season? I mean, it's not a storage facility. It's not a storage area.
Correct. We do have a suggestion for that at the end, for your consideration. Some photos here of the boats on Pleasant Street, they're basically piled on top of each other. There's also four locations around the lake where there's institutional boat storage. One is Brooks School, 30-plus boats. They, I think it's no surprise, do a great job of storing those properly, mostly off the ground, and it's very well kept. Edgewood has a very small boat storage area with two boat racks. There's 15 boats. If we give an award for proper boat storage, Edgewood would be best in class. Rolling Ridge has about eight boats, also with racks, to keep them off the ground. And the Country Club has about a half dozen. Another area that we covered around the lake was shoreline clearcutting. There's some evidence that clearcutting is accelerating. There were two areas clear-cut this year. One was about two dozen mature trees, about half of which were alive, the other half were dead. That was right on the shoreline. Another was vista pruning, where the top halves of the trees were cut off. There's a couple areas, one on Sailway, that's been clear-cut and evidence of erosion, and then along Bonnie Lane, again, an area where both the shoreline and the lower half of the trees are cut. There's also a terrific photo here, which I wish I could describe adequately, but it shows a section of the lake in its natural state. And right near the mouth of the hatch, next to the water treatment plant, there's four houses located there, and from the water, you can't see a single house. Really is in the natural condition that I think is intended by the town regulations. The erosion along the lakeshore, as I said before, where boats are stored, and also along Route 133, Great Pond Road, between Butcher Boy and Ray's Pond, there's some sections there where the bank is severely undercut. In some places, if you are down by the shoreline, you cannot see this from the road, but you can see where the bank is undercut, as much as five or six feet underneath the bank. Again, why does this matter? Protecting the lake is cheaper than fixing it. We've seen examples of green algae blooms, and controlling erosion can help to limit those type of blooms. So, in the discussion of our group, we thought there were four areas of potential action. One is removal of the debris, trash, and derelict docks. Most of the debris is gone. We had a wonderful trash cleanup. We'd like to do that annually. The fall's the best time when the water level is low. And one dock left to go, so that's essentially done. Updating town regulations with respect to boat storage and permitting docks and boating safety, lake education and signage, and monitoring and enforcement. So as I said, the first of the four is pretty much done. In terms of updating the town lake regulations, some of the questions that you asked, areas that we thought were worth thinking about is to create a permit combining lake usage and lakeside boat storage. That would be a higher fee than just lake usage. Would also require that all the boats be removed from the lakeshore after the boating season. That would accomplish two things: allow the shoreline to recover, and also help us see which boats are not being used, and those boats could be removed. And also address the docks in the town regulations. Perhaps have some assessment of whether or not those docks either predate regulations or have a permit, and some sort of amnesty period to remove those if they don't. And also a boating safety requirement. The town regulations currently don't say this, but there is a state regulation requiring life jackets actually be worn, not just in the boat, for canoe and kayak users, between September and May. That's because of the effects of cold water if you fall in, and really, I think, is something that should be done on the town regulations. The third area of potential actions is lake education and signage. Improve community awareness of the watershed and lake regulations. So the lake is about 500 acres. The watershed is about six times as large, 3,000 acres. Watershed goes out to Sutton Hill Road, Leesah Lane, Bear Hill Road, really extends a long ways away from the lake. The 1987 watershed report that was done for the town identified that about three-quarters of the water going into the lake drains from all of those neighborhoods. That's the importance of protecting the watershed. The planning board's drafting an educational mailer for all watershed residents, and I think we ought to think about other ways that we can improve education of what's going on in the watershed. And other areas of the country have been very successful about doing things like this. The entire Chesapeake Bay watershed has had a fabulous effort, very successful, in educating people across a five-state region. Our challenge here is smaller in terms of scope, but I think would really yield some benefits. And the concerns there are things like cutting vegetation that would prevent erosion, and also the use of pesticides, and especially lawn fertilizers. Fertilizers going into the lake and accelerating those algae blooms. And potentially updating signs along the lake roads and trails, and marking the boundaries of the watershed as well. And then the last area of potential actions is monitoring and enforcement, and the areas of concern are the dumping and the littering, the clearcutting, non-resident lake use, boat permits, and runoff into the lake. And also providing the raw lake water testing results to the Planning and Conservation Board so that they can do long-term monitoring. There's probably no better way to assess how well are the watershed zoning bylaws working than to look at the long-term results of the raw lake water testing. And I think that was about it.
Yep. Thank you. It was, fortunately, we didn't see the pictures. There's some good pictures in there. Some of the things that we're going to do that kind of back this up, if everybody agrees that this is the path forward, we have identified some money in the budget to build some racks for boats. Two areas that we have identified, one is right near the hatch, and there's a nice, we went, all of us went down, took a look at it, and it's a pretty easy place to get the boats in there. And the other place would be at the old North Pumping Station, or the old Pumping Station. And that will be taken down this spring, and so we'll have much more room there for parking and for boat storage. We're going to look at expanding the parking lot at Pleasant Street. Looks like we can get maybe half again more cars than we already have in there, and organize it a little bit better. And so that would be a good place, so they could access the boat storage at the hatch. And then what we, obviously, we want to discourage the storage along Pleasant Street. That's one of the places that it's pretty bad, the erosion. But what we're going to do there is make it easier for people that are day-tripping, bringing their boats in and taking them out, to get down there, so we're going to fix up that path and get down to that. So those are the things that we have planned in, you know, to kind of support all this. And we'll be working on the regulations. This is going to take all next year to do this. This isn't going to happen this year. But what we want to do is do some education. If you feel we should go forward with this, we'll do some education over the next year, letting people know what we're doing, and then implement all this in the fall and the next year.
Bruce, how would the boat storage work? Would that be like a lottery thing? Because obviously, you can't support 100 or so boats.
Yeah, we're still working on that. It probably, we probably would, you know, we would only have, the storage would only be for the larger boats. So like kayaks and things like that, that would be the day trippers in and out. But, and we'd have to do some kind of lottery, be, you know, permitting or first come, first served. We'd have to work that out.
Can we go down and boats that aren't permitted? And, you know, there's some, even in the pictures, where you know that boat hasn't been used in years, and it could have been, you know, a nice old gentleman who's since passed, and we don't, you know. Do we have, what's our, you know, can we go down and remove?
I think first, we're going to have to do some education. I think first, we've got to let people know it's time. We did this, I want to say, five or six years. One of the first couple of years I was here, it was done through the police department. And it was, it was a lot. It was very involved. And there were some unhappy people.
Yes, well...
And then we had the boats for a long time at DPW. People came and got them. Some of them weren't worth getting, obviously. And so I think we're going to have to go through that process. I do have some money in the budget to remove those boats as well. I identified in next year's budget. And so, again, I think it's a process of education, and then this fall, we'll probably start taking them out.
And what about even...
Slide from Valencourt's point. I think part of, if we start with a permitting, with resident-only permitting, what we're getting, we don't know of how many of these boats are people who've come in who are not residents of the community. I think if we start requiring a permit for the use of the boat on the lake and linking that to the storage, we'll pretty quickly understand how many are residents and how many are not. I mean, our, you know, our goal is to satisfy, beyond the day trippers, our goal is to satisfy having a spot for residents. So I think that'll allow us fairly quickly to understand sort of that delta, and it may very well be, it requires an additional rack, or we'll have sufficient space. But I think one of the things we don't know today is how many of those folks are non-residents. And obviously, our preference is to make sure that the residents have an opportunity to store their boat there.
So the current lake use and drags on the town website do specify residents. The 2002 Lake Use Committee that was formed, that was their recommendation, and I think it was the results of that committee that formed the lake usage regulations that are on the website now. There are some boats around the lake that I have seen, particularly on that stretch of 133, between Butcher Boys and Ray's Pond. They are properly permitted for the state of Pennsylvania and New Hampshire.
But did you have anything that says that people can store their boats there?
So the regulations on the website are silent about shoreline storage, except to prohibit overnight storage of boat trailers or any use of boat trailers. The 2002 Lake Usage Committee included as part of their study whether or not storage ought to be allowed, but it did not end up in the town regulations, so they're silent on that. So what we're suggesting here is that a permit be provided to allow it with a higher cost, both lake usage and storage, but that that be limited to two areas where there are proper boat racks to keep them off the ground to help mitigate the erosion.
So storage would be linked to having some place to store.
Right.
Not just on the ground, not just storage.
We want to eliminate everything on the ground.
I think the enforcement becomes a little bit of a trick, you want it, with the Pennsylvania permits aside. I think that's one of the real challenges. But I think if we can start with getting the boats off the ground and onto proper storage, we can really start to identify what the problem is. This is, as I think Bruce and Peter identified, this is a multiple-step approach, right? We have to begin somewhere, because today, quite frankly, it's not only, you know, it's aesthetically not attractive, it's creating pollution, it's creating a lot of problems. So we need to take some initial steps, and that would seem to be around the area of creating some boat storage, which is an opportunity for residents to get their boat off the ground, which means it's going to probably live longer, and then allows us to track the usage of the lake from a resident perspective, and then come back with some additional recommendations on how to take initial steps. But I don't see any reason why initially, we can't sort of compel folks to have built-in of the permit, or whatever the recommendation is, a requirement that if you're going to place your boat there, it should have a permit, and we provide the resource of someplace to put it on. How do you folks feel about that?
First of all, thank you very much for all your hard work on this, and I also appreciate the fact that, you appreciate that this is a wonderful resource for the town, and that you appreciate the fact that you still want to continue allowing our townspeople to enjoy that lake.
Absolutely.
As, you know, being involved in this back in 2002, it was, it was really clear that that beautiful resource, if we did not allow our own people to enjoy it, and hopefully protect it, obviously, they need some reminders, and then a time where a family would like to just go out on a boat, maybe do fishing, they have to get in the car and go up to New Hampshire or something. And we felt as though this is a beautiful resource, and it's, we should use it, protect it, and use it, but again, not just leave that for the elite, those who can afford waterfront property. So I'm really grateful that you do understand that, and I do think the storing of the boats along the shoreline evolved. At the beginning, people weren't doing that, but it has clearly grown. And I think most people don't realize that when you store a boat, that it contributes to erosion, because I think people just do it all the time.
Absolutely. I was going to say that there's a lot of fisherman, fisher people, what do we call them now? Anyway.
People who fish.
People who fish. And there's, you know, a ton of boats, and I think, I honestly, I don't think that people understand that once they drag it out, they're like, eh, whatever, you know? And they don't really understand that, I mean, you know, some people don't understand at all that that's our drinking water, so they don't understand. So education, I love the idea. My concern is, is we're going to have enough boat racks, but as Andrew mentioned, we'll know better as to how many of these boats are actually abandoned as we move along, so...
From a public safety standpoint, I mean, do we have any data on...
Right, the permanent ones are good.
I mean, they're unattended, these boats, and they're all along the shore. Is there any data from NAPD about how often boats are stolen from the shore, just out of curiosity? I mean, there's nothing policing that.
They usually tie them to a tree with chains, is what...
That's not a complaint we're receiving.
Yeah.
But it is, it is a concern, you know? I mean, if some of those chains are old, it's not too high for some kids to get up there and, you know...
And are they really all 180 were chained?
No. I'd say, you know, a good majority of them are, but quite a few of them are not chained either. You know, I think the point about the boat storage kind of grew over time is really what happened, and, you know, as more boats came, it kind of leads to more boats, and there's another piece of that as well, that all three of those areas really became dumping grounds for trash. It was pretty bad, and I think that was also sort of a vicious circle, that, you know, well, there's trash here, why should we pick up our trash? There's, you know, you see trash, you throw trash. And so I think it's really got into kind of a bad cycle, and so the thought here is to try to clean it up for all those reasons.
What do we provide out in this area, too, for...
Trash receptacles.
For trash...
There are barrels, there's barrels over near the hatch, there's barrels at the parking lots, there's barrels at Ray's Pond Pumping Station, and we put a barrel over near Pleasant Street this year.
Oh, you did?
But it's, I mean, it's, you can't put them right down on the, on the slope there, but we tried to get a lot of them around this year.
And I think anything's going to be an improvement. Anglers, that was the word I was looking for.
Anglers.
Very good word. So we identified a bunch of things. What would you say is your biggest concern? I mean, is the boats, I mean, we spent a lot of time talking about the boats, but there's also the... also the clear cutting, there's also chemicals from people's lawns going into the lake. What do you think, what's your biggest concern of the study that you did? And I agree with Rosemary, this was a great report that you guys took. Congratulations to all of you for putting this together. You should put everyone's name on it, too. That's one thing I noticed, to recognize the folks that contributed, because it was really good.
Before you answer that, though, when Peter first came to us to join one of our boards, and I'm sorry, I cannot remember your rank, but he's fairly high-ranking Coast Guard, retired Coast Guard, and an environmentalist. So we, when we said, well, how about harbor master? And we're all kind of chuckling. But I'll tell you something, what you have done as the harbor master with this is just phenomenal. And I think I really appreciate it. Again, we were, it was sort of a little tongue-in-cheek, what do we need a harbor master for? And it's clear that we really do need someone who, not so much the harbor master, but protects our lake and our wonderful resource. And I know that you enjoyed it as a young man, because I know Peter's family. And thank you very much in collaboration with everyone putting this together. But now, answer the question.
Thank you. I want to say when I left that, you know, session and ended up with this role, and, you know, I spent 10 years at sea in the Coast Guard, but I actually got my start on Lake Ochikowick. So it does mean something to me. But I went down and introduced myself to Bruce, and then to Jennifer, and to Gene, and it was all kind of interesting as to, you know, you're the what? But I have to say, they've been just terrific supporting everything.
But it was very economical of you to do this, because he comes with his own tugboat. And I had a picture of it for tonight, but obviously, I can't.
Well, the tugboat is a canoe.
That he pulls, that he pulls the floats over to the wastewater treatment plant, and we get them out of the water.
Nice.
So, you know, I hesitate to say one thing, and I think what we've done with our group is to say, look, there are three or four things that we really ought to do, but what's a good place to start? That's doable. And do it in a progression that makes sense, that, you know, I would like to preserve, as you were saying, you know, the ability to go out on the lake. And my own personal view is that if we have residents using the lake, I think that's part of the protection.
Yeah.
Because if they see something wrong...
The stewards.
The residents are likely to tell us. So I do think it's important to get the docks out, we're almost done, and to understand the use of active docks, because I think we originally thought it was just the Brooks School dock. And the fact is that it's really grown much larger. So what is the use of docks, and what's that issue? And I think the shoreline storage and permitting is something that we can get our arms around, and will have a direct impact on how the shoreline looks and the erosion. I do think the clear cutting could be an issue if we can't get our hands around it, but I think we know about it, and so now we're in a good position to address that. And I do think that the education of the watershed is very critical. If you think of those 3,000 acres that are contributing three-quarters of the water that goes into the lake from places as far away as Lisa Lane, Sutton Hill, Bear Hill Road, that's critical, because all that stuff goes down into the lake, which is a bowl. And once it goes in, it stays in. And so I think we do have to get our arms around that. And I think what DPW has done with lake water testing gives us an excellent basis to measure and have data as to what's happening in the lake, what's happening with the different tributaries, which are part of what are measured 10 or 20 times a year. And that can help us understand where do we need to look at. And I think we use that to educate and inform residents.
Can I make a suggestion, just to move the conversation a little bit? Because this is great, there's a lot here, right? So...
A suggestion, certain aspects of what Mr. Boynton has identified, even in the last comments, are items which are being taken up on a regular basis. The clear cutting is addressed through conservation when it becomes, when conservation becomes aware...
Who's doing that? Is it residents around there?
I'd rather not mention the resident, but there are butters to the lake that are not businesses generally, they're residents.
They're cutting the tops so they can see out there.
In both cases.
They're cutting the front so they can...
The Conservation Commission is addressing those as they arrive. And I think the same thing Mr. Boynton identified, the planning board's work in identifying a circular and other communication for the benefit of addressing. I think some folks will be surprised by the extent of the watershed. I think as people move in and out of the community, sometimes they don't realize how far that stretches, and I think the communication. So those sound to me more like ongoing items. It would seem to me that, would it make some sense for the group to come back with recommendations to the regulation changes, so that you'd have a work product? Because ultimately, you're going to have to decide, and with which of those changes you'd be supportive of. And then from that work product, are there items within, which is item two on this report, update town lake regulations? Are there certain areas you want them to focus on over others in the short term? Because this is sort of short, medium, long-term stuff, right? So it seems like the regulations will take the longest to deal with and will have the most direct impact. So are there certain aspects of the regulations you'd like this group to work on and make some recommendations coming back?
I mean, well, for me, I definitely would... Well, when you say that it's ongoing, I mean, I don't think watershed has been educated in a long time.
No, and the planning board is working on that currently.
Oh, okay.
I'm not saying all these really, really...
And maybe we continually put that in, even in the tax bills when we do, you know what I mean? Like, it's something that we need to be constantly educating. And maybe even, and I don't know, maybe this is bad, because it could cause more trash, but that we start putting some, even just on the trees near these boats, like, hey, we're coming, and did you know that you're eroding?
And there's a signage component of this. And I think the signage generally will happen once we've got some direction on the regulation. I'm not at all worried about the fact that we can't get signage up, as long as we understand clearly the regulations, and then we'll put signage up.
Right. I mean, are we looking to task them within eight weeks? Like, what do you mean?
The signage is generally will sort of organically through for public works, and as a result of what have the... It seems to me that the thing, that the primary focus needs to be around those regulations. So we have, we have suggestions about regulation changes on the bullet two. There's six of them. Some, you know, they range from this decision about whether or not we're going to change the permit, whether a permit will be required for storage. I think before, a lot of, some of these additional action items will just happen, but certain can't happen unless the group gets direction about the regulation changes. So there's two ways to do that. The board of selectmen can individually communicate things that they would change in the regulation, which seems a little sausage-making approach, or the committee can come back and give you sort of a red-line version of the regulations on those things that they would change. And then the committee, then the board of selectmen can review that, and over a period of time, determine which aspects of the regulation you'd like to change, which ones you want to prioritize. Or tonight, you can look at that bullet point of six and say, this one or two, these one or two items seem to be priorities, and we'll deal with the other ones later.
A couple of things that I would like to see enforced. It is, it is a town asset, and I really do think that the boating should be really only for people who live in the town in North Andover. I feel pretty strongly about that.
As to, I do.
A couple of things, thoughts. Eagle Scouts, those boat racks could make a great Eagle project, and also the vocational school might be willing to build some of those. I'm just curious, did the number of permits, how does it tie into the number of boats on the shore? I mean, it's just sort of interesting, because we do have permits. Was it $3?
There's more boats than there are permits.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's a bean of boats. Would you say...
I think so. The three areas that I gave you, the 60 at Pleasant, the 30 at the north pumping station, and the 10 along 133 by Ray's Pond, those are the three public areas, even though they're not designated as such. The remainder of the boats are at private residences around the lake, and many private residences have two or three or four kayaks laying out front, or a canoe, or a rowboat, and then the four institutional locations.
Okay.
But I would, because the topic is really as large as the watershed. See if we can narrow the focus down, take this in incremental steps and see what the reaction is. So even as far as discussions about boats on private property, we can narrow this to the public view right now and focus on those areas where we're seeing a large amount of boats. I mean, if we could, if we could, in the intermediate term, address the abandoned boats, that would be substantial progress.
Yes.
And the way to do that, I think, is to first address making sure we know those inventory of boats are and a requirement for permitting.
I mean, the season is almost upon us, so if we're going to change regs, it needs to move along.
No, we're, again, as I said earlier, this is going to be a year process. Because a lot of the things that, if we do, did, do do some of the things that we proposed, it wouldn't, it's in the next fiscal year anyway. So like, for instance, the pump station's really not going to be down until towards the end of the fiscal year, and so those type of things. So we've got the year, I think, to move forward on this, as Andrew said, and we can come back in...
I have another thought for the boat racks, is Mass Core. For those who don't know, Mass Core is through the prison.
The prison.
The prison system, they build furniture.
But the paint is at the State House?
It's a little bit different. It's actually, they do printing, they build furniture. I would certainly look, give them a call for this. This is kind of the things that they tend to do.
So how does, how does the group generally feel about the idea? How does the group generally feel, before getting to the, how does the group generally feel about the idea that a permit would be required?
Permits are required now. If there's no permits, get rid of the boat. I don't get it.
Well, there's a second piece to this, the permit is about...
Right now, the permit on the town website is described as lake usage. So the permit is only for you to have your boat on the water.
Right.
Not for storage.
Right. So get rid of the boat.
Well, but I think the way to do, I think when we do, and I had probably a similar experience to Bruce in another place, where taking all the boats away is just not, there's an issue with that.
Well, because people will be angry and it'll... No, it's a lot of work.
So the recommendation is, we change the regulation, and the regulation requires something to put the boat there. Either a permit, or a permit and has to be on a rack. So the regulation needs to change, so we in turn can kick off the process of saying, the regulation changed, Bruce broadens the communication to make sure everybody realizes the boat's not gone. I'm telling you, when you remove those boats...
Not us remove those boats. Why can't we go to all of those boats?
We don't know who they are.
I know, but put notices on all of the boats.
Because some of them are abandoned.
The permanent ones, we don't know whose those are, right? The permanent ones, we can contact and say, you know, you got to move your boat, get it out of there.
Get it out. I mean, that's what I mean. Why can't we at least start with notices on all of these boats that you, your current permit is for lake usage only? Maybe only half of the people remove them, but it's half by May, and then you may know which ones are the abandoned.
I think we just have to trust the experiences, that if we don't change the regulation and say that storage isn't allowed.
Right.
Because it's silent.
It's silent.
Because it's silent.
So you really need to...
It wasn't an issue.
So you can just store private property?
Yeah, like, that's what I don't get.
Why do you have to, isn't it already sold into that?
As a practical matter, if we don't, as a practical, as a practical matter, if we don't change the regulations, Bruce's job and what Peter's trying to accomplish and the committee's trying to accomplish will get compromised almost immediately, because the noise that will surround starting to take action without changing the regulations will be such that we'll get distracted from the meaningful stuff. So we need to change the regulations. So when they call these folks, and then they call me, and then I call you, we, so we need to start changing the regulation. I understand that, I agree with that, rather just remove them all and start again, but the reality is, it's not that simple, and it will end up distracting from the more meaningful items we want to change. So that's what I meant about prioritizing. I would strongly recommend that we change the regulations to require a separate permit for storage, and then we'll work with the folks to make sure we provide a resource, which is, you'll be able to get the boat off the ground. That will help us start the other process of removing the items.
So we'll go another four seasons with...
Nope. I think we can, if you made a decision tonight, I feel like we can begin a process aggressively, but it's, we can't, just removing them is going to...
No, I don't think we need to remove them. I'm saying, put notices on them, like a ticket, when a car is parked inappropriately. Some people will just move it.
How about...
We can begin an information campaign, but I'd strongly suggest we change the regulations that require a permit for boat storage.
I agree with that. I think, I think we can...
You can build in a grace period to get it out.
Yeah, right. But start giving a heads up to these people.
Yes, that's the...
But it would help us to have that regulation behind us.
Okay. I get it.
I mean, most responsible boat owners are not going to leave their boats for like an entire season outside, not even on their own property, right? I mean, I voted on the board, I would never leave it somewhere unattended.
Yeah, but you know the fishermen, the anglers.
Yeah, I shouldn't say responsible.
You know, I mean, they're rowboats, they're kayaks, you know, you know who's out there. Like, throwing it in on a Wednesday to do a quick little...
The anglers that I know take their boat there, and then they take it...
Well, I was just going to say, we take the boat in and out, but...
So is it related to the two bullet points, I mean, the first two bullet points? Can we focus on those? Will you authorize, I'm not making any, I don't think at this point we can, we need to talk about a fee. I'd rather have the permits than the dollars, right? We can talk about the dollars later.
I agree.
From this perspective, can we get support to create a permit?
Combining lake usage and lakeshore boat storage? And it can be the same fee you have today. It's not, to me, it's, and two, require all boats are removed from lakeshore after the boating season? Right? If we can start with those two, then we've given these folks the resources to be able to begin to communicate and get some things done.
I honestly think, yes, and I'll second that, but I honestly think that we're offering a great benefit to provide storage. I just think that's fantastic.
And we have to make clear that the storage doesn't mean what we have today. It's going to be something different.
Oh, yeah.
A permit and storage doesn't mean you just leave it on the bank of the lake and wherever you want.
Agreed.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Can we just slow this down, Peter?
Aye.
No kidding. What do you got?
I just wanted to make a pitch for the last bullet under number two, which is the boating safety one.
That's in there already. We put it in already.
You did. Great. Thank you.
That's an easy one.
It doesn't require all...
That's going to be in there.
It doesn't state law or state regulations from town anyway, so...
Yeah. So we're... So on the information that we give out now, it's going to be in there.
The Coast Guard's part coming through.
Can I ask for clarification on the most, motion is the motion to apply the existing fee to require that it be tied to the boat, so what's the existing fee amount?
So it's $25.
It's $20.
$25 for the first boat, and then an additional $10 for each additional boat within the family.
Okay.
And $50 for...
Oh, and $50 to park at the north pump station.
That already exists.
That's the only place you can park.
It's a parking, the storage fee, though. And the storage fee though.
Okay.
Not storage.
And we'll continue to work to try to make progress on this system, provide more detail, but this at least will allow us to begin the process to...
Yes.
Seem acceptable?
Great.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, did we...
Yes, he's good.
Motion made a second?
Did we have a motion? We had a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Wait a minute. We didn't go in here. No. We need to move in. I have a motion to move into a public hearing.
So move to...
All those in favor? We are now in a public hearing in regards to the removal of a public shade tree per MGL on Carlton Lane. Per MGL C-87. What is it? Chapter three through 24 on Carlton Lane.
Well, good evening, board. Thank you for taking the time to consider our project.
Please give us your name and address.
George Tower.
Sarah Tower. Thank you.
24 Carlton Lane. So it's gonna be kinda hard to follow up on that exciting Lake Chicoet meeting. Gotta be honest with you, we wanna have...
He's trying to keep trees up, isn't he?
Yeah, they kinda blew my cover.
Hey, I gotta follow down here.
Might as well, you know, get the cat out of the bag. So let me just start off by saying, we've been working with conservation to have trees removed in and around our house. Mainly large pine trees that are within striking distance of our house. And with two small children, we have a six-year-old son and a two-year-old daughter, you know, we don't want to be having them out there running around with big trees and branches falling on them.
If you've seen, I know you have, because we've spelled the name, if you've seen the property, we don't have a blade of grass. It's all trees. I mean, to the point that you open my daughter's window and a tree comes in. You have to push it back to close the window. We are, we are like a house in the middle of the woods.
Did you buy it like that?
Yes.
It was marketed as a nature lover's dream, so...
No lawn mower were necessary. That's what it said in the description.
And you bought it.
We did.
And you bought it.
So we'll have all intentions of clearing some trees in the front, some of the larger trees, in the future, and here we are in the future. And, you know, after working with conservation, we noticed that there's a small radius at the front of our property. And if you look back in the past, Carlton Lane used to be a circle about 30 years ago. So that radius is a remnants of the circle, and it was never annexed onto our property. So if you look at our property, I don't have it planned in front of me, but it's basically a rectangle, and towards the street, it kinda, you know, juts in about 20 feet. And that area is where our son waits for the school bus. And so we wanted to have some of those trees removed, and we were gonna do it ourselves, but we noticed that it's actually, you know, part of the street. So that's our presentation tonight, and we just wanted to, you know, bring that up.
Fellow board members, I was here Friday and Saturday. There's nine trees in concern here. One of the trees you were talking about with the school bus is the, there's a big branch in the ground about 12 inches in circumference. The tree is dead. It's useless. There's two white birches that are listing at 2:00. There's two small trees that don't have any leaves on them, and there's two more pines that the green is going off, which means the tree is rotting, so...
I think there's 11, though. Birch is great for your fire, isn't it?
Well, we'll have a dozen don'ts, so go 13. No, so I mean, it's just, I see no problem of approving this and taking, they are town trees, and they should come down.
All 11 are town trees? Even the ones that go through?
They're all marked, and we've been working with Bruce.
Even the ones way up close?
Yeah.
No, no, that was a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can take care of yourself.
And that's in our way.
This has been in addition to the ones that are close to our house.
So you're proposing to take these 11 down and replace them with other smaller trees?
Flowering dogwoods, whatever, small bushes.
Whatever you guys tell us we need to do.
Just not those giant ones.
And they gotta take these trees down on their own dime, two guys. They're gonna pay for themselves, so I would suggest that Bruce make quite a bit of fill available for them to help them out.
So I think your point is, what you were trying to say is, you're already in a well-forested type area, so it's not an area where you take two trees down and everybody goes, whoa, what happened? You're already in an area where there's plenty of vegetation. So you're asking for some more place space and for safety, and I agree with Mr. Stewart, and if that was a motion, I will second your motion.
Include me.
Oh, we gotta close the hearing. That's right.
We gotta close the hearing first.
I know, but is there any other questions before we move on? Anything for the public? Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Now do we have a motion to approve or deny?
I make a motion to remove the, have them remove those trees, and if possible, make available some loom from a vast supply to help them out. Seeing they're paying the cost of taking the trees down, we should help them out.
I don't know about that vast supply, but we'll do what we can.
Yeah.
Mrs. Tippett, are you still there?
He hasn't left the building yet.
It's dwindling. Really, it is.
Really, the loom is dwindling.
I think, I was just gonna say, so Bruce, don't count on the loom, but...
Let's keep it clean.
All those in favor?
I'll second it first.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was filling, so, and then all those, but actually, do we need a new motion? Because let's take up the loom.
It was if, if possible.
If possible.
If possible, because it is a cost to remove all those town trees.
We don't need in the motion. We'll do it, we'll help however we can.
Do what they can, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, so I'm gonna pull him up. Merrimack Wolf, so I am going to, okay, that's done. We're gonna, what is it, consent items is next? All right.
Your side.
Thanks. Mark Cooperstein, next is consent items. One of the funnest mornings.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
It's been four years, it's been a great three years coming in front of you, it's well, on our fourth annual. We've had great success with the parade, and we're hoping to continue it this year and 40 more years beyond it.
Awesome.
So we're proposing for April 30th, Saturday, starting at 8:15 in the morning, starting the parade at 9:00, running for that one hour down to Cal Thomas, and having our closing ceremonies and opening ceremonies down there as well, too.
It's a fun day.
Yeah, it's a fun morning.
It's a fun morning.
It's great. We've had great success, and last year was the first year that we brought softball, and we're gonna bring softball back into it.
Yeah, it was great.
We brought the challenger division into it as well last year, and they just absolutely loved it. It was great. It was a good morning.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. See April 30?
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
We'll do it later. Okay. Is anyone here from Merrimack College? Okay, we're gonna move right into the interviews, then we'll go back, so I'm gonna take it out of... He just asked me to. I know, actually, why don't we just go back? Actually, we're going back in, can I have a motion to move into licensing?
Can I have a motion to move into licensing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're in licensing. I move.
So we have one item on the licensing to grant a one-day malt and wine license for a pre-hockey game celebration. I'm not quite sure what they're celebrating. At Merrimack Athletic Complex on Friday, February 26, 2016, from 5:30 to 8:30.
So moved.
All the paperwork seems to be in order, and all the fire police are all in a favor. So move, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to move out of licensing?
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Out of licensing, we can continue on.
All right. So we're gonna move right into our fire chief selection process. We all have information that was previously provided to us, and we will, we're a little bit behind, but we're going to begin with Graham Rowe as our first candidate. Graham, why don't you come right up?
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
We will move around the table, and there will be five different questions that will be asked of you this evening, and answer them as to the best of your ability, I suppose.
I'll do my best.
And I would like to personally thank you for throwing your hat in the ring and being willing to serve your community at such a high level.
Thank you.
We're lucky to have folks who are willing to do that.
Thank you.
And what you do for the community every day. I will actually start. What do you consider your most significant accomplishment as a firefighter?
One of my most significant accomplishments as a firefighter? Basically getting where I am today. That's one of the things. When I, when I first got on this job, I really didn't see myself moving up anywhere. I didn't want to, I wanted to stay a fireman. I wanted to ride the truck the whole time. One of my greatest accomplishments was, throughout the years, I became self-motivated, and I wanted to get more and more, I wanted to be more and more involved. Sitting around, seeing so many things that you want to change and not being able to, that was probably my biggest, moving up to lieutenant, so I could actually accomplish those, and then moving up towards hopefully deputy chief or chief, and fulfilled the need there. As for incidents, I wouldn't really call out any incidents as some of my best, it, you know, we're usually called when somebody's in a bad, bad spot.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Graham, thank you for applying for this position.
Thank you.
We appreciate all your, your good work for the town.
Thank you.
What do you view as the strengths of the department, and how do you intend to continue those attributes? And then what do you view as the areas of the department that need improvement, and how would you address those areas? So it's a two-part question, so take your time.
Hopefully, I'll remember both parts.
I'll read it again.
Some of the strengths of the department is, we're becoming very progressive. We have a young group of people coming in that are very self-motivated, like myself, or motivated to move forward. We have a new EMS coordinator who is pushing us past the boundaries, bringing us closer and closer, leading the Merrimack Valley in EMS. Some of the other strengths, the guys that are on there are willing to pretty much do anything that you ask of them. Their camaraderie is very good, they love to be with each other, and we're kind of a big family. Moving forward with trucks, equipment, we're starting to become a department that has some of the state-of-the-art equipment. It may take a few years to come and get those, but we're working our way that way. Our weaknesses in the department that could, that are holding us back? We still have a lot of old traditions. Every firehouse does, and that's the hardest part to get over, is tradition. When you want to move into the new, like, present something new to somebody, they always fight it and don't want to accept it. You have to sell it to them, and that's one of the hardest things that we have in the department. It's not just ours, but all departments. So trying to push our way through that. How would I keep up with the current trends of moving forward? You're gonna have to work with people's strengths, find out what their weaknesses are, play on their strengths, and build up their weaknesses. A lot of people, just like myself, have strengths, weaknesses. I need to know what those are to help people continue our trend of moving forward, because if you are motivated and you love the job that you're on, you're going to perform better at work. You're welcome.
Graham, I guess I'll take the next one, and again, thank you, echo my fellow Sutcliffe's comments, and thank you for coming in, and thank you for taking this on. So this is like a financial question on budgeting. So recent years, overtime has been a bit of an issue on the department, and we've had times when we've, you know, the trucks have had to be understaffed because of overtime issues. Just like to know your comments, or your concerns, or your thoughts around there, and how, what you would do to, to kind of alleviate those issues.
The overtime, every department faces the overtime issues. We have a lot of people that are on the job that are legitimately sick, or get injured, or have their vacation time. We have to assess those a little bit better. What have the trends been? What are we using most of the time? For the ones that do use and abuse sick time and/or other time, they need to be held accountable. You have a job to do, you have to be there, we have to support each other and be part of a team, and if you're going to be using and abusing your time, then we need to make sure that you're held accountable and keep within that track. The more people that use it and abuse it, we're going to shut down the pieces, which don't, doesn't just affect our department, it affects, it affects the community and the service that we can provide. So you have to crack down on those that are using sick time as vacation time, or that just don't want to come in, so they're gonna use that. You just have to find the right trends of, you know, are there any patterns? Are there people that are doing stuff that they shouldn't be doing? For the injury leave, all the people that have gone out on injury, you need to look, well, do we have a health safety officer that can look into, why did that happen? What caused that injury? Was it something, someone that wasn't paying attention? Someone that was joking around and just playing around? Was it caused by the facilities? Was it caused by the truck? And once you can figure that out, hopefully you can cut down on the injury.
Good thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Graham, I also want to say thank you for coming before us today and putting yourself out there as a candidate for this position. The board voted to keep this search internal, and I think that that actually, I think that we all agree, because it was unanimous, that that was a good decision. But promoting from within at times creates some difficulty for individuals, in that you are now supervising those you previously worked with.
Yes.
What are your thoughts about how you'd handle such situations?
There are a couple of things that you need to know when you move up. You need to remember where you came from. You have to remember what people go through. The ambulance, our ambulance is a very busy piece of apparatus. I remember those 2:00 in the morning calls, or the 3:00 in the morning, or you're up all night running those calls. I remember that, I have no problem with that. I actually miss the ambulance. I'm probably one of the only guys that'll say that, but I actually miss the ambulance. As long as you're fair and consistent, you set out what you want to do in the department, and you follow that. No special treatment. Just make sure that everybody knows that what you're doing is not just for them, it's for the department as a whole and the community as a whole. It's not just individuals that you have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Graham, do you think that you could describe a time where you were faced with stresses which tested your skills, and describe how you overcame that?
On the job or off the job? Does it really...
You know what? You decide.
Oh, boy. On the job, stresses, there's a lot. There's, you know, unfortunately, our department gets called for situations that are not in the best, people's worst days. Some of the stresses, the first time, I delivered a baby. That was, I had never seen anything like it, I did not know what to do, it was just there. Cardiac arrest, the stresses. It all falls back on training, and if you keep the consistent training. The fire service is such a dynamic business or profession, that you have to constantly keep up with your training. If you don't, you start to fall behind, and you're hoping and praying, pulling out old information. So to keep up with that and deal with the stresses, I can constantly train. I hope you've seen my resume. You can see that I'm constantly taking classes and moving forward, because I need to make sure that I have that. We're in a profession where if something does happen to somebody, it could be life or death. One of the other things is, I'm a member of the Greater Lowell Critical Incident Stress Team, so they've kind of given me relaxation ways when you get into certain situations, who to talk to, what to do, how to relax, because of what our profession is.
Well, thank you. I unfortunately skipped over letting you have an opening statement.
Oh, that's all right.
My apologies.
That's quite all right.
So my apologies, so we are, we're going to do a closing statement that, please feel free to combine the both.
I want to thank you for letting me do this assessment process. It was a tough exam, I will say that wholeheartedly. It was quite impressive, to put it at least. No matter what happens, I'm glad to be a firefighter in this town, I'm glad to work here, and it's, I will continuously move forward, and I will get to that point at one, one point or another. to that point at one, one point or another. But I want to say thank you to take your time and meet with me.
Thank you again, Graham.
Oh, anytime. Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Well, now Billy gets chipped an opening statement too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Graham. Have a good night. So, this evening, as you know, you're here for an interview with the Board of Selectmen. Each of us will be asking you questions. I was a little nervous and forgot to let Graham have an opening statement, so you don't get one either.
But you can talk long at your closing one.
I'm actually going to begin this evening with the questions and, and you will get a statement, but later. So, deputy, what do you consider your most significant accomplishment as a firefighter?
Well, I'm extremely proud of my whole career. Thirty years on the department, ten years as a firefighter, twenty years as a lieutenant, and then in my current position as deputy chief. And I'm, I'm proud of the progress and the things that I was able to accomplish in these eight months as deputy chief that I think have really benefited the town and the department.
Thank you.
Again, thank you so much for applying for this position and all your, your past work and accomplishments.
Thank you.
I have the second question. What do you view as the strengths of the department and how do you intend to continue those attributes? And also, what do you view as the areas of the department that need improvement and how would you address those areas?
Okay, I didn't hear the first part, Rosemary.
Sure, no problem. What do you view as the strengths of the department and how do you intend to continue those attributes? So, what are the strengths and what do you think are the weaknesses? This is pretty much the question. Take your time.
Yeah, the strengths are definitely the people that work with us. I mean, we have great men and women on the North Amma Fire Department. We've, we've been a progressive department for quite some time, starting with Chief Dolan, with our fire apparatus having the Class A foam capability, the fire safety education trailer, we were the first in the, in the area to have that. Some of the things that we're doing right now are the first in the community as far as our Class V ambulances. And some of the things that I, I would like to work on is some more education. I think we've had a great public edu, public education program, but I think we can do more with the new station. I'd like to see us with the capability of broadcasting some fire safety programs to reach more people other than just what we're reaching in the classroom and the seniors. So, I think there's some things that we can do there. We're weak in the IT department, not, not the Amma's IT department, they've been great. But as far as the fire department, I think we're a little bit behind. I'm looking to this next fiscal year, purchasing some mobile data units for the trucks, which would assist us greatly on inspections. Any of the incidents we go to, we'll be able to pull up live data rather than the way we're doing anything by paperwork right now. So, I think we're a little bit behind in that. But as far as vehicles and equipment, we've been, you know, very well taken care of by the town. So, those are some of the things I would look forward to do.
Thank you.
So, Bill, I have the next question and I'd like to echo my fellow board members' thanks for being here tonight and for all your service.
Thank you.
On and off the.
Well, thank you.
That you've done. My question is financial. Recently, in recent years, overtime has become an issue on the department and we've gotten to the point in some cases where we're almost to take equipment out of service because of lack of staffing for those due to the budget issues. So, just the question is, what are your thoughts on that and how would you address that going forward?
Well, I've actually had some conversations with the town managers. I do have some ideas that I think we can use in order to help that situation with the overtime. It's early stages, so I don't know if this would be the opportunity to actually talk about those ideas. I'd still like to explore those thoughts with the town manager. I think it'd be premature to actually talk about those now because they would involve some bargaining issues. But some of the things that I've done that have saved some money in some other areas, what I'd be looking to do is sending four of our firefighters for SEBA maintenance training. Would be able to save $2,000 a year by doing our own fit testing. I've been able to bring some money into the town that we haven't actually done in the past. In the eight months I've been deputy, I've been able to bring in about $50,000 that we normally didn't have with the hazmat reimbursement. Dow Chemical is going to be close to $30,000. The trash truck incident was almost $10,000 that we recently brought in. Also with some negotiations on some of the contracts that we had or some of the items that we were paying for that I felt that we weren't maybe getting the best cost. I was able to negotiate some of those items. So, that was about another $10,000, $10,000 that I was able to save the fire department this past year. Those are the type of things I've been looking to do on the expense side. As far as the, the overtimes, with, with the overtime, I'd be, you know, looking for the well-being of the firefighters, trying to keep them healthy, trying to keep them physically fit so we don't have those, you know, those injuries or those, those sick times that do happen. So, I think that's a way of bringing some more money in and then looking out for the, the well-being of the firefighters.
Good answer.
I want to say thank you as well for being here. I think for everybody to put themselves out here for this, for this position is, is something that we as a board welcome.
Well, thank you.
Towards the end of last year when we began this process, we voted to keep this search internal. I think it's because we recognize that our firefighters, our fire department contains a lot of talent. And while there's a lot of benefits to that, one of the drawbacks is that promoting from within at times creates some difficulty for the individual and that you're now supervising those you previously worked with. What are your thoughts on how you'd handle those situations?
I'm going to handle them the same way I handled them as a lieutenant. I took a promotion. I knew what came with that promotion and the people that worked on my shift knew what I expected, knew how I felt things needed to be done. As a deputy chief, I've had opportunities to, to speak with firefighters both in a positive and a negative way. They know I've led by example my whole career. I've shown up to work. I have a great attendance. When I was injured, I, I made a quick recovery and came back quickly. So, they see that I've done it and they look at it as, you know, we understand what he's trying to say because he's lived it, he's done it. And I've always felt like that they respect the position, that they understand that certain things need to be done a certain way and that's the way I've always, I've come across at the fire department. I, I take the job seriously and I hope they also, you know, feel the same way.
Bill, can you explain to me, I mean, or describe rather to me, a time where you were faced with stresses which tested your skills and, and describe how you overcame that?
Well, we had a fatal fire in, in, I believe it was 2006 or 2007. Being one of the officers, it was a stressful situation when you know there's somebody in the building and you're doing everything to, to rescue that person. We were limited that night on the amount of people we had. We did manage to rescue the, the person, but unfortunately, a couple of days later, she did pass away. That, you know, was a stressful situation. But we realized that those type of situations can't happen. We recently had one in the last two weeks. I was very surprised that I went through not only one fatal fire, but two. So, I think that's the toughest part of the job for all of us, a loss of life, whether it's a fire or an accident. So, those situations can be stressful, but we have each other. So, we communicate with each other, we make sure we're all right. And I just think if you do your training and you, you realize that training is a big part of the job, and I, I've trained my whole career, and I made sure that the training that I did, I could bring back to my department and make sure that my unit, as a lieutenant, was trained to the best of their ability. And as the deputy, that type of training I've been continuing doing. We are going to have possibly a large solar panel farm in town, so I wanted to make sure that the guys know what the risks could be of that. So, I've taken that type of training, two courses recently. I've taken training on cancer with firefighters. I've taken training on proper SEBA use, hazmat training. So, it's, it's, the training I'm doing right now is to make sure that the people I work with stay safe. If I become chief, then I'll work on my professional development. But I'm feeling, what I need to do now as, as the deputy chief is to make sure that everybody goes home safe and that means taking courses and taking training that I can bring back to the guys and the women, the firefighters and make sure that they're learning everything that they need to know.
Thank you. And again, my apologies about the opening statements, but.
They're probably happy about it.
I know, they're probably happy a little. So, we will close this interview with a closing statement.
Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody here for the opportunity. When you start your career, you're not sure where you're going to end up. And, you know, obviously, when I started thirty years ago, I didn't know I'd be sitting here tonight looking to possibly become the chief of the department. But it, it absolutely would be a privilege to me. I've enjoyed what I've done for my whole career. I've enjoyed the past eight months as the deputy fire chief. The fire chief has delegated a lot of those type of things that he does on me now. I've welcomed him. I thought I'd done a pretty good job with them. I'd be happy to end my career as, as the fire chief. I believe I continue what I've done for the community, what I've done for the, my fellow firefighters. And I think, I think the town and my fire department would be proud. I know I've earned their respect and confidence to do the job and hopefully if that's the way the town feels, I'd be, I'd be willing to, to accept that position.
Well, thank you. Thank you again for your service to our community and thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So. Well, we're going to wait until he leaves the room. Of course, yeah, no, but I mean Kathy, I think. Welcome to stay. Oh, my goodness. Right. Well, can we have a discussion prior to any motion? Or do we have to have a motion, then be able to discuss formally is what I'm asking about?
A motion is typically, it doesn't really, I mean, you're safe in either way.
That's what I'm asking, the safety.
You can have what I would say is a collegial conversation that would lead to a motion. Sometimes if you place a motion, so if you, what I would suggest is if you're going to go motion first, may want to entertain the prospect of putting both candidates in play to allow you to have that kind of conversation. But it's solely up to you. You can make a motion for one candidate second and have a discussion. You can have a discussion before the motion. You're not in bad territory.
Okay, that's what was my concern, the territory.
Madam Chair, I, I think it's pretty clear that they're both excellent candidates. We're fortunate that we have two fantastic candidates who clearly have worked very hard to get to this position. So, I would make the suggestion that they're both in play, but along with that, I would like to make my, my motion to move that deputy, that the deputy, Bill McCarthy, be promoted to position of chief is, as both were. I have to read it? I'm sorry. Thank you.
If you're going to make a motion for a candidate, you should make sure that a motion is.
Okay. Move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Deputy Chief Bill McCarthy as the fire chief effective January, excuse me, I'm doing what you're doing, March 22nd, 2016, subject to receipt of letter relinquishing his civil service status in execution of the employment agreement provided by the town manager.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'd like to just speak to it for a moment. Again, as they were both terrific candidates, it is clear that the deputy has more experience, more education. Tonight I saw a side of him of great leadership, comfortable in his position, not that I didn't see for the lieutenant, but it's clear that he is just a little bit more prepared, or shall I say, he is prepared and, and I think that he has earned and deserves the position.
I think that one of the things with, with deputy chief is, is that when you speak to his fellow firefighters and those on the department, there is an incredibly high level of respect, comfort in knowing that he's there. And, you know, I mean, for lack of, or, or a simple way to put it, they feel safe with him. They feel safe with him. And I, and I think that's, I think that's so incredibly important, along with the education, the experience, the moving in the ranks, the, you know, moving up the ranks, supervising all of what you said too. But I think he has that respect and that, and that level of comfort within the department, you know, where they, they really see him as a leader.
And I, I agree with both of those and I'll add to that. Deputy Chief McCarthy is also not only a great representative for the fire department, but has been a very active and involved member of this town. He's been involved in so many different aspects of the youth services and, and, I mean, he's just a, a great representative for the town, both as a fire chief and as, in other areas. So, yes, I wholeheartedly support that nomination and would like to see that go forward.
I'm equally thrilled. I think, no, I think that, I think that the deputy answered, I actually think that both, both gentlemen really are a testament to the strength of our department.
Agreed.
And I, I want to echo what, what the chairwoman said, which is, you hear it from the fellow firefighters, actually how they speak about both of these men. Again, it's, I think it's a testament to the fact that this is a really cohesive department and it's one that I think, no matter who we select, though I'm, I'm fully in support of, of Deputy McCarthy for this position, I think it's, it's a sign that this department's moving in the right direction. And I have to say that there's one line that Bill used tonight, which I think is important, which is you lead by example. And the example he sets as a resident, as a firefighter, I think that anybody in our community could look at him and absolutely feel comfortable with him in this leadership role, so.
I agree. I agree. We're a very lucky community that we were able to have such qualified candidates, you know, within the department. And you're, you're so right. So, we do have selectmen's do it and anything to add?
After all that.
How about ditto?
After, after all that, what I look at is he, he, it was a very strong exam and he did well in the exam.
Yes.
That's very important.
And I think it's very important to, before we move to, to, to the vote, I want to just echo Selectmen De Colagiero's that, that I think Lieutenant Graham Rowe has a bright future in our department as well.
I mean, both, both answered the questions. I mean, these are questions come out and they have the answers right away. It's instilled in them, both of them.
I agree. So, we have a motion? We have a second? All unfit, to appoint Deputy Chief Bill McCarthy to the fire chief position? Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. That is a unanimous decision. Do I need a roll call? No. Don't throw me off my game, though.
I just, I would just like to say though that. That our thanks.
Do we clap?
For.
Do we get, do we clap? Yeah, you're welcome to give your opening statement now.
Well, thank you for your confidence in me. I'm looking forward to it. I appreciate, you know, the town, you know, setting this up and, I don't know a lot of words. Usually I'm not a lot of words.
You're usually really good.
So, I, I know my, my family's proud. I can tell my mother with the candles almas.
Hey, Bill, I'm here for the fishing.
I was wondering where you were. I remember from.
But no, I am. I'm looking forward to the challenge. It's, it's a great department. Again, when I say it's the best job in the world, I truly mean that. And it's a great, great bunch of people and I'm looking forward to working with everybody, the town, the department, all the boards. And I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I would just make one suggestion. I know you'll be doing this with the police department soon.
Leave, have water for you?
Have a little water. My mouth got dry.
I was thinking, we'll get some Johnsons for us.
At one point, I think my lips were going to open.
I was thinking the same thing. It's funny. I'm like, we should have had water. Congrats again. Yes, yes, yes. It's the 21st and he's 22nd.
Which is likely this point the target date for the interviews with the police candidates, but probably would be an appropriate date since the current chief is retiring around that time to have a formal process for future Chief McCarthy to, to come in and be sworn in and have a proper record.
Okay. That sounds great. All right. So, we are moving on to old business, nothing, new business, nothing. Any public comment? Wow, staying okay. Town managers report? Any big ask the manager or anything?
We continue along in the process with another finance committee meeting this week. We'll continue that process as it gets to about the third or fourth week of March. As I mentioned, we'll have the Assessment Senator and set up the process for interviews likely for the March 21st meeting for the police. So, you'll, you'll get a little bit of a break going into that. And if you've previously received a copy of the Community Preservation Committee request, so you have a copy of that. Chairman John Simons of that group will probably also be at the 21st meeting to go over, has his comment, I don't know which meeting, one of those meetings.
I prefer not on the 20, unless we, with the police chief, then we start at six.
We'll have to figure out the timing. We're tight on a.
You know what I mean.
Is it going to be a packed agenda, but we're also tight on the, the town meeting is seven or eight days earlier this year. That's why everything seems compressed. I want to make sure that the Community Preservation Committee has completed its deliberation in actually recommending projects.
I understand.
So, when it comes before you, we're talking about the approved projects. So, we'll try to fit that in.
I was going to say, well, can we have another meeting? I mean, I don't want to take away from anything. I don't want to take away from them. I don't want to take away from.
Maybe we'll look at the prospect of moving the seventh meeting to the 14th and do a lot of that. Okay. So, we'll, we will work around the schedules to find out where we are. If the. If the CPC is completed with their deliberations, then, then Mr. Simons can come on that particular evening. If not, we'll work toward some, maybe we can have a special night for the interviews. But, but one way or another, we will work with you to find.
Okay.
The mix of those items. But everything's getting a little, we're starting to build up some steam and get a little hectic.
Right. So, I mean, I think all of us are open to adding, right?
Yeah.
Not the 14th, 15th, 16th.
Okay.
Donald.
We just can see, so we'll read out the things, so if we're coming up with a gentle or something, just, yeah. It's a packed month that's coming up, so I think that that addresses it, an extra meeting.
Well, sure, Jim. See, I need you around.
Andrew's good?
Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, I guess so, don't I?
You need a second.
Do we? Yeah, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was going to say we have another meeting.